Okay.
Doctor.
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 I've heard this before.
Mister.
Doctor.
Yeah, mister.
Yes. Lynn, how are you? Congratulations.
On what?
See, on that committee, the, uh, one, uh, the, uh...
Oh, yeah, another board?
No.
We want to...
No, definitely not.
You're trying to be there.
Absolutely. He sucks like me for being too... Only the cameras are up at the ceiling.
Lynn, thanks for...
Okay, uh, call the senior order, roll call please. Dr. Brenner?
Here.
Dr. Katula? Mister Capelis?
Here.
Dr. Schumacher?
Here.
Mister Sutner?
Here.
Ms. Shields?
Here.
Here. Uh, and then we have a public hearing, uh, on emergency day e-learning plan.
I'm gonna turn over to Doctor Bossman.
Thank you, Doctor Schump. The Illinois School Code allows school districts to adopt a resolution using an e-learning plan or an e-learning day uh, in lieu of an emergency day, meaning that we would not have to make up a day at the end of the year extending the school calendar, uh, if approved. Currently, due to the governor's emergency proclamation, uh, we are covered. However, at the advice of our attorney and, and our agreement that, um, it would be beneficial for the school district to have a approved plan, uh, on file. Our original discussion took place at the October 5th Board of Education, uh, meeting, and since then, we've had a chance to work collaboratively, uh, with the YEA uh, to make some modifications and some adjustments, uh, to those original plans. And I certainly want to extend my, uh, gratitude and appreciation to the YEA leadership, uh, for working collaboratively, um, to make the best plans that we, that we possibly can. Um, I do want to note and remind the board and the general public, um, that this emergency e-learning plan is in the event of a short-term school closure and not related to a long-term school closure that could potentially happen due, uh, to the pandemic. So those are a separate set of plans if we were to ever get to that point, hopefully not. Um, but that is a reminder that these plans would go into effect only if we had a short-term closure due to perhaps, uh, bad weather, um, or a facility, uh, malfunction. And within the plan, I'm gonna share my screen with the group. Uh, within the plan, there are a series of, uh, schedules from early childhood all the way, uh, to 12th grade. And each schedule is designed to meet the ISB requirements of five instructional hours that can take place synchronously or asynchronously, um, over the course of, of that particular day. Um, the high school schedule, uh, would follow either an odd day or an odd period day, uh, schedule or, uh, follow a schedule that was, had even periods on that particular day. This is to maintain our current schedule that has been implemented, uh, this year. And so this could also, um, take place on a Wednesday. And in this document itself where it says collaboration days, uh, on a Wednesday, that section on the screen that is gray, um, that would not take place in the event of a short-term emergency closing. That would only be in the event of a longer-term, uh, closing. And so, uh, depending on the schedule that the high school is following, um, students would, uh, attend from 9:00 AM until approximately 3:00 PM and, and follow the current schedule of either that odd day, um, or that, that even day. From a middle school perspective, um, the middle school will attend class virtually from 9:00 to 3:00, again, similar to the high school for 9:12. Um, but they would have a full 10-period day with classes of 25 minutes and then have additional assignments in the area of mathematics, uh, to meet that five-hour requirement, uh, from the Illinois State Board of Education. And you can see, um, in both schedules, uh, the high school and also the middle school, there are some built-in breaks, um, for lunch and, and to get students, uh, a chance to get away from the screen for a certain amount of time. From an elementary perspective, uh, this is a, a sample of a, uh, what a first grader through a sixth-grade schedule, uh, would look like. Um, each day they would begin by having a whole class meeting that would be intended for social-emotional learning and develop some connections, uh, with their, with their current class or students. Then students would participate in 90 minutes of math and 90 minutes of ELA. Thirty of those minutes would be in a small group. Um, so a student may have their math group from 9:00 AM to 9:30 and, and then participate in 60 additional minutes of independent math practice to meet that 90-minute requirement. The same thing would happen for English Language Arts. Uh, a student would have a half-an-hour, um, synchronous group that would be taught via Zoom by their instructor and then have another 60 minutes of independent, uh, ELA math practice as well. The kindergarten and early childhood schedule, I'll show you just a, a brief example. Um, it is on the same document, um, those, and follows a similar format, but their meetings are a little bit shorter. So those are 20-minute meetings instead of 30-minute meetings, and students would have, um, an additional 25 minutes of independent math practice, um, each day. That is, um, due to the fact that our kindergarten program, our preferred instructional model is half-day at this point, uh, in time, and some very similar adjustments that were made, um, for our early childhood, uh, learners as well, as well. And that schedule is in, uh, the documentation. Uh, we did have a chance to implement a, uh, remote learning day on November 23rd, um, earlier this year, which taught us a lot, and we had a chance to, uh, get some feedback from staff. Administered survey that closed, uh, last Friday, and we'll be using that survey data and that information, um, to develop, um, or make any modifications to the schedules. Um, so we would consider, uh, the schedules fluid, uh, and if we have some additional, um, information that comes forward that would, uh, allow us to have a more effective instructional day, um, we would make some minor modifications, uh, to those schedules as that information, uh, comes forward. We also had a chance to modify the e-learning guidelines, uh, for parents. We have internal documents and external documents. Um, it's for parents, students, and staff. Those guidelines have information about attendance requirements, the different learning platforms that will be used uh, in the event of an emergency e-learning day and general expectations for, uh, the e-learning day itself. Um, and so at this point in time, I will stop my screen here, uh, and ask the board or general public if there are any, uh, questions that we can answer. Was, I'm sorry, was there a question? I didn't, I couldn't, couldn't hear.
Are there any questions on that?
It's time to review.
I have a statement. May I speak?
Yes.
Please do.
Hey, hi, um, as a fellow educator myself, um, I think it saddens me that we're trying to take a snow day away from the children. You know, we're more than capable of making up one or two snow days at the end of the year. The excitement and the anticipation of maybe we have a snow day is, you know, something that you just can't take away from them. Uh, if, we have e-learning day, then, okay, we can't go build a snowman or we can't do family time because we have, I mean, your schedule looks great, but then, again, where's the... Where's the excitement and remembering that they're children? I mean, we're not in the business world. You know, let's not force them to do a e-learning day when we could have a snow day and have fun as a family, which is SEL right there, which is a dying situation in family life. Um, like I said, a fellow educator, we're, we're told, don't schedule your summer vacation until all the emergency days are used. So if a teacher does that and we do do two days of emergency days, well, that's on them for not following the union's guidelines there. And that's on them. I just don't think we should push our children to a business world model, even though we can and we are capable and we all have Chromebooks. I get all that. I just think it's sad, like, oh, we might have a snow day tomorrow. We'll see, and then, you know, we could go out sliding or doing something in, you know, physical activity instead of, again, just going into staring at a screen, which we do way too much of, I believe. Uh, that's just, that's just my opinion, and, uh, I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for those comments. Uh, there was another, uh, question that would be, and that was in the chat, uh, from Tony Morgan. Tony, no, we would not have e-learning teachers change their schedules to correspond, um, with the whole district remote day. Um, they would stick to their current schedules, much like we did on November 23rd.
And back to the first, uh, comment from our participant. Yeah, I think each year that, in, as each thing comes up, it'll be a case by case matter. Um, part of that, John, I don't disagree with, but I, but I think we're gonna have to look at whether, what's the situation surrounding it. Uh, I think we also look at the, the safety of individuals and, um, you know, it's not only a snow day opportunity. We might have one building that has a flood with electricity that, so I think we have to be broad in our thinking mindset of, of what these days could be used for. Um, and I guess as they come up, the situations come up, I would be in conversation and communication with the Board of Education and provide a recommendation or rationale and, and as we typically do, we'll go from there. But I think it's a, a fair comment by our participant, and I will certainly take that into consideration.
No, we really appreciate those comments, and we no doubt we're, there's, it's a virtual city. Um, so we're imagining a school year where we're together every day very soon. Um, and, but we really appreciate those comments, and I know Doctor Schump and his team will take extra care of what needs to be done. But you're right, it could be a building. Um, it, it could be a situation where we lose electricity or the server goes down and there is no continuity. We have to wait till that all goes up, so this is a case by case basis, but we, we appreciate you for those comments. Okay, any other comments from the board? Anyone else from the school?
No.
Uh, anybody else from the public? Uh, we're going to need a motion to adjourn that hearing.
Someone?
Second. Mr. Secretary, roll call please.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mister Capelis?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mister Sutner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burke?
Yes. All right, so we'll adjourn heading, and then we'll open the conference room. And, uh, roll call please.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Mister Capelis?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mister Sutner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burke?
Yes. Uh, stand with me.
Forward by me.
Oh. Move. I'm viewing audio.
Yeah.
I put my toys in the water. The United States of America, and to the Republic of West Canada, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And also on the resolution table?
Yes, cultivate learners, work by skills and experiences for our society.
Okay, well, thank you for that, and I believe we have public comments.
Yep.
Okay, there's one. Do you have a microphone for this video?
Right up front.
All right, can you hear us hearing?
Yes.
All right. Uh, I'm actually going to read a letter that we submitted, so if it sounds written, it's because it is, so. Um, Peggy and I, first of all, would like to thank, uh, express our gratitude for the district's response to the COVID-19 pandemic in every possible sense. We are faced with an undeniably set of variables and complications, and we are proud of everyone's efforts during these difficult times. As you may know, we have a senior in high school this year, and our focus, the last several months has been to make sure he gets through his senior year. Based on the amount of stress that is going to be placed on the district and teachers, we knew that we needed to be more present than ever. He selected the hybrid learning model, and we were in 100% support of that decision. We're fortunate to have a good diligent student that is self-motivated, and we felt the hybrid model was super well. Even after all of this, we're beginning to see our good and diligent student start to slip. While his grades are still strong, the structure and the team of the current environment are beginning to take their toll. We attribute this to many factors, COVID fatigue, social isolation, et cetera. But the one we're worried about today is something that we hope you, as a governing body, can exert some level of influence upon. We are talking about sports and more broadly, all extracurriculars. Our district took an amazing leadership role in modeling how education should be handled during this time of crisis. As an organization who turned every knob, left no stone unturned, and leveraged technologies in ways that other districts, quite frankly, could only dream about. We write today to ask the district to once again step up and assume a mantle of leadership in restoring an absolutely critical part of the educational process, our students' extracurricular activities. We've taken the whole step together before, but this time we have the advantage of time and data on our side. It's time to step out of crisis mode and leverage the data from literally thousands of examples of state execution of extracurricular activities of all types. We've seen other states, colleges, universities, and professional organizations conduct operations with science-driven protocols and contingency that have proven to be successful. The mental toll, the loss of motivation and opportunity, has become too great of a threat to ignore. I recall a conversation from the early months during the pandemic in regards to kids returning to school and activities. The comment that landed with me the hardest was, and I quote, "No one wants a page in the yearbook of all the kids that died from COVID." We didn't know much about this disease. We didn't know how to treat it, we didn't know how it was, we didn't know how it was spread, and it's hard to argue with that statement. I wanted to play it safe, just as much as anyone else. In just nine months, we've learned so much. We've seen how the dumb are by orders of magnitude less susceptible to the deadly advice. We know how it spreads, we know how to diagnose, isolate, and prevent further spread. We have a vaccine. Our worries now shift to the ones like we hear out of Clark County School District in Nevada. That district will unfortunately have a page of students that died this year. Not from COVID-19, no, not a single one. They will have a page of multiple students that have died from suicide. As a family that has been personally impacted by the devastation of a loved one taking their life, you are asking the district to reaffirm your leadership in handling all aspects of the pandemic response and begin working with your peers in returning kids to every possible extracurricular activity. It's time to safely return kids to an engagement level across all aspects of student life that benefit them academically, socially, and mentally. In closing, the beauty of all this, and what we affirm as a country every day, is that people have choice. Families and students will have the opportunity to review any plan the district assembles and choose to either participate or not participate based on their feeling. No one is forcing anyone to do anything. Peggy and I would like to thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Any other response?
Yeah.
Um, and I would just like to affirm that Mr. and Mrs. Jones who brought it forward, I think, you know, as a parent who has three kids that are active in lots of different things, sports, music program, drama program, I see they're being isolated from their friends, from their activities, is a, is a, is a problem that my wife and I worry about every day. And, uh, you know, it, it scares the hell out of me, to be very honest. Um, the last thing any of us wants for one of our children's disparate to take their own life based not being isolated, based on not being able to, one of the things that they love to do and that they work so hard at for so, so many years now. Couple of us here have seniors, you know, that take part in sports and extracurriculars of all sorts, and, um, I know I see it again every day for my, my seniors, it's very, very troubling. Uh, so I, I like Tony and Daddy, I, I urge us as a board, as our administration, as our district, to really be on board and start a rally and do whatever we can. I know there's lots of variables out there that, um, would maybe prohibit us from doing things, but any opportunity we get, I, I really think we need to take that, do the very best we can for our kids in the district, throughout the state, throughout the whole state. Every one of these kids needs a chance. Thanks. So, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Jones. Yep. Sorry about that.
No. No, I, I, everybody agrees, everybody wants to do that. And, and there have been recently some, some directions on what protocols could possibly make this work better. And one of them is, is, is the rapid testing done frequently. We know that rapid testing and frequently with mitigation would, would definitely help ice, or keep people from spreading COVID. And that, that's, that's something, you know, we, we've talked about, you know, for, for a while. There was a time we thought we were gonna get a state grant to do this. The cost of rapid testing is really an expensive, if you can get the test. Most other countries in the world, you can go to the pharmacy and buy a rapid test. You can't do that in the United States. It's a medically driven model, it's really hard to get them. But it may be something that coming forward now, because and the vaccine's great, but, you know, these kids aren't gonna get it until the spring, you know, of early years probably. So we need to have another strategy of, kind of try to get them back. And, and I would say we should look into the, uh, opportunity of maybe reacquiring the rapid testing. I mean, it's literally now they have a piece of books that read this paper. And you know, with about 87% accuracy, yes or no, and as you keep taking it, obviously your statistical data gets better.
Sure.
Um, so it's, there, there's, there's things out there we, we should look at. And, um, and let's see what the cost is, you know, if, if it's something that we can manage. Uh, I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't want to seek to get, get it. Because every day you see the depression and the difficulty with a lot of these really good kids that are strong emotionally, um, that it's beginning to take us tough.
Sure.
Uh, so maybe that's something we could put on, on our agenda. We can start, we can look at the state board again, you know, and look at the grand possibility. Yeah, and possibly just like the public health department about acquiring rapid tests at a low cost. And so, and it just, I've seen it done, it's so incredibly easy. So if you're looking at what happened, you know, forget the politics. The White House did rapid testing from the time of the beginning of COVID, and even though they didn't mitigate at all, they didn't get a case until, that was, you know. So how many, how many months, you know, so look how, you know, look how effective it was. So it's something that we, we should be able to look at and try to find out how can we acquire this type of testing. So for situations like this, we give at least the parents an option. We have something that looks like it can be relatively safe, won't impact the rest of the students. And, and, uh, if you want your child to be involved, this is what our plan would be. So I'd like to see us look further at that.
So, Miss Lasky, who's on, on our call here, did she update? We have been doing this, Doctor Brenner, so I'm gonna have Melinda give you an update.
Sure, so, um, thank you, Dr. Brenner. I, I agree with looking at some further, um, rapid testing, and so, um, I have been working with the team and with the Health Department to, um, apply for something that's called a CLIA waiver so that we can, um, use our schools as a rapid, um, COVID testing site and, um, get those results of a rapid COVID test within 15 minutes. So we have applied for, um, the CLIA waiver. We have not received those results yet. Um, but if we are granted, um, the ability to do that, we will work closely with the Health Department. Um, and the current test that the Health Department, um, would make available to us is called the, the Bionex Now test. Um, so we're just waiting right now for the results of that, of the CLIA waivers.
So, uh, when did you apply for the CLIA waiver?
Uh, last week.
Okay, all right.
So the response that I got from the, the CLIA application was that we would know within 14 days.
Yeah, exactly, I was gonna say, you know, most, most clinics and offices that don't have a full-service lab, have a CLIA waiver. So, and it does come pretty quickly, and hopefully, you know, we'll see what happens here. But I would just keep on them because like anything in the paper nowadays tends to get difficult. Um, but I think you're, yeah, you're absolutely on the right tracks. I'm glad to see you're ahead of the game there, and as soon as we have that, then we can look at, uh, protocols for implementation. That's great.
Wow. It could be, you know, the one thing that we did do was we funded all the stipends, and so all the extracurricular we pivoted, but potentially maybe Dr. Schump, the committee could look at a phase-in approach. Um, because, um, it's not only at the high school level, it's seeping down even to the fourth and fifth grade level. And even if we could phase in, something as simple as art, something that, you know, that can, that gets someone a little bit connected, it's not, it's safer, and we could talk about phasing it. We funded all that, the stipend, you can take away one stipend, but could we pivot that into phasing model as well? Couple bits on testing, you know, especially as we look to the new year. Even giving kids the idea that we as a district are looking at this, that this is something that's coming down the pipeline, will give them hope and get them motivated, um, because it's happening, it's happening in person.
Yeah.
It's only a matter of time until we see something that we don't understand.
I think, uh, I agree, Dr. Burge. But I think this fall with athletics, with the, the music department, especially here at the high school, I know firsthand, we, uh, everybody involved did a really terrific job of following protocols and doing the things that we were told we needed to do. We had minimal, if any, cases of COVID come through. To me, there's no reason why we, you know, still can't have contact hours and get these kids doing something. Uh, and I know it's out of our hands with IDTH, but, um, and, and again, following the protocols and doing mitigation as we're supposed to, I think if Doctor Katula were here tonight and agreed with that, and he advocated for that as well.
And I think, well, we have to be mindful, you know, that someone, there was a senior as well, um, and somebody spoke for the Health Department, and 18 different groups have signed today, pleading for them to be advocated at the state level.
Sure.
Um, because of the mental health and social, uh, aspect of, that our kids are going through right now. Um, we also have to be mindful, as we said, China, of IHSA parameters, ID means parameters. Um, we have to be, we have to protect not only our kids and our staff, but also our district, um, and not put our own salt in the position where we do lose any of our liability, community, or our court of duty, um, moving forward, as you worded that down.
Right.
But I, I certainly am supportive of what, anything that we can do to get that.
Sure.
And if there's other ideas out there, the board winds up, we go in a different direction or a direction, I'm certainly supportive of that.
I think Melinda's on the right track. Yeah. Yeah, and I know that, um, at some universities that, that, you know, they had better success. We're in... Were universities that have not done this, these programs get closed down. So you, you can't just use standard mitigation because it hasn't worked for professional sports, it hasn't worked for college. You have to go to that next step. Yeah. If we can do that, and that's the right thing we can do that. Um, I mean, University of Illinois can do it, you know, but I don't know how the, the state board, the council couldn't do it. As long as we have that protocol in place. But we have to go to that next level to, to really make it safe and successful. Because I don't think there's good yet out there to say, don't do that, that, that the programs persist. It's like somebody's parents that moved to Iowa and put their kids in sports programs and then the programs got closed down anyway. So we don't want to see that anymore. So, but, but I think there is a way. And, and it sounds like, you know, Melinda's way or a way of, of doing this. And then once we have it, we can certainly petition for the tort issue. Uh, so we continue that protection because it uses the same, the same type of protocol as the standard using the high ground.
Did you want to say more for us, Tom?
We're willing to help and just thank you for the consideration. I, I, I think based on what Melinda's done, what I've heard in just a few minutes. I think you're well on your way to continuing to be the leaders that we've known you to be during this. Um, so thank you for everything, truly thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being on the stage.
So we'll look forward to hearing from you, Melinda, that, uh, CLIA waiver.
Well, that's done a great job with that.
Really? That's a lot of work.
It's been a lot of work, get it done, and she's taken it without knowing anything about it. Um, so we're really excited to look forward, um, for moving forward. Hopefully next week, it's a little, a lot of that back and we'll be approved and ready to start moving next step.
Great.
Have a great holiday, Jones, family.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, right.
It's exciting.
Sure.
Um, we have the committee reports, but we do a committee in the halls where, and everything's running, we'll sign off. So Len, let's see around with the central panel. And we, we need.
Hi, Gary. Since Gary's not here. Uh, approve the minutes of the November twenty-third, twenty-twenty Board of Education meeting, December seventh, twenty-twenty committee meeting. The activities from report for November twenty-twenty, the final bills and claims for November twenty-twenty in amount of eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-two cents. And the bills and claims for December twenty-twenty in the amount of one million, forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. Flier requests received on December second, twenty-twenty and responded to on December eighth, twenty-twenty from William Barkley at Ameritech requesting electric utility invoices for the last twelve months and destroying the January twenty-eighth, twenty-nineteen executive session recordings.
So, moved in second, any discussion? Uh, roll call please.
Yes.
Mr. Capelwood?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Saffner?
Yes.
Ms. Sheel?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'll be, I'll be brief, but definitely good news to report. Um, as of December, from a revenue standpoint, we're at forty-seven percent. On a pro-rata basis, we'd expect to be at about forty-two percent. So, uh, we're ahead of plan, but most importantly, um, we're ahead of plan as it relates to the levy. So we received our final payment and for, uh, the first half payment, we're at ninety-nine point seven-six percent in Kendall County and ninety-nine point three-one percent in Kane County, which is very, um, comparable, uh, to where we would be on a, on a normal year. And just to put that in some perspective, I'm in a group with some Lake County, um, CSBOs and right now, most of them are only at ninety-five to ninety-seven percent um, of their projected levy. So thanks to the community and, you know, everybody, um, that the rep, the levy came in very strong. And, um, state, uh, payments, uh, I know, Dr. Brenner, we are as current as we've been, uh, since I've been here. We only have one outstanding payment from FY twenty, uh, that's a very small driver's ed payment. And we actually only have two, um, payments outstanding even for this year. One is a driver's, small driver's ed payment. Uh, and one is a preschool for all grant. So, um, we're a little behind on federal and that's a little bit, uh, has to do with timing, but uh, overall in great shape on the revenue side. Um, and on the expense side, we're at about thirty-three percent versus a normal forty-two percent. Salaries are, are just below where we would expect, expect them to be. Uh, benefits is where we definitely see, um, strong results. Our, uh, health, our health savings fund is at about, um, five hundred thousand dollar benefit versus pretty flat last year. So that's certainly contributing to our favorable, um, expenses. Because we're at about thirty-six percent on benefits. If we added back that five hundred thousand, um, we'd be at forty percent. Um, we're low on purchase services. That's primarily driven by transportation and food service. Both of those, we would expect to kind of continue, uh, you know, throughout the year. We didn't have summer school transportation this year. Um, we're seeing lower transportation costs during the year and then, um, volumes are down on food service. So we're seeing both lower, um, federal national school lunch program revenues as well as, uh, lower expenses. And then our other objects, if you took a look, is, is very low. It's at twelve percent, but that's because that's where our uh, principal and interest payments sit and we'll be making those in December. So, um, overall really good results. And then the other thing I wanted to point out is transition fees. Through November, we were actually at three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And our full year, uh, budget for that account was three hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we've almost, um, hit our full year budget for that, uh, through the year as we continue to see strong, uh, strong new, new home, uh, building. So, um, all in all, great news. Just wanted to point out that, uh, Mike has developed some, um, quarterly reporting that we're sharing, we're going to be sharing with our principals and our, um, and our, uh, department, uh, department heads. And so once we have December results, we're going to share, um, kind of our projection model and what that, uh, looks like. And then we'll continue to look at that, um, at each of our board meetings so that we know where we're going to end, uh, end the year. But right now, everything looks favorable, um, to budget. So good, good news to report.
And motion to approve, judge your report as presented, second.
Moved in second, any additional comments?
So, Mindy, are you, are you hearing anything about how the state's going to be able to maintain personal money or, uh?
Haven't, I mean, we, we, you know, we haven't, um, heard anything, I mean, other than there's still an expectation, at least as of now, that we'll continue to get our evidence-based funding payments. I think there is definitely, um, risk on our categorical payments that we could either get potentially a, a lower percentage. We haven't seen, um, anything definitive, but, uh, certainly with the, um, not to steal Mike's thunder, but with, you know, kind of the governor's fair tax not, uh, being passed. You know, I think there's some concern that there could be some trickle down to education um, in terms of continuing not to see that increased EBF funding and potentially even, um, seeing like a pro-rata cut per student. But we, we haven't seen, um, you know, anything definitive. Uh, Mike and I tend to try to be on a few webinars and things. So certainly, um, if we start hearing anything more specific, we'll, we'll share it with the board as soon as we know that. But definitely cautious of, you know, cautious about that for sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Moved in second. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed?
We have a question on this, Mindy. Do we need to appoint two directors for, uh, your approval with taxes? Because don't we normally do that?
Don't we normally? We need someone to sign, Mindy?
I'm sorry, was that a question for me?
Yes. Do we need two directors to sign approval of taxes for the end of the year?
Oh, no, um, we don't. We were able to get most of the, um, typically we do that, but we were able to get most of the expenses um, into this December board report, uh, or the board, uh, kind of packet. And then, uh, we may have slightly, um, larger kind of advanced pays, but we don't actually, uh, feel that we have a need based on the difference, uh, between the dates, that we don't have a need to do an actual second, um, and a board packet.
Give you a holiday, Nate, and you're off.
He was so excited, Mindy.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Sorry to disappoint you guys.
That's alright.
Alright, we think we got everyone approved it, alright, so motion passes. And then we go on to a series of personnel recommendations and we have some curriculum hires, so we need a motion.
Motion to approve the curriculum. Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. Capelwood?
Yeah.
Mr. Saffner?
Yes.
Ms. Sheel?
Yes.
And Dr. Burge?
Yes.
I'm getting word that the board's hard to hear. So, you know, we're just trying to remember the talking in the mics and our public is interested.
Alright.
Very stern. Okay, uh, we have some writing, uh, recommendations and need a motion on the table, please.
Motion to approve, there is making this presented. Second.
Moved in second, any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, then we have some transfers. Do we need a motion on the table?
Motion to approve, the transfer is presented. Second.
Moved in seconded, uh, any additional comments? We'll need a roll call, please. Mr. Saffner?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. Capelwood?
Yeah.
Ms. Sheel?
Yes.
Duncan? Yes. And then lastly, we have some hires.
Motion to approve hires as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded, any additional comments? Roll call please. Mr. Saffner?
Yes.
Mr. Capelwood?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Ms. Sheel?
Yes.
Yes. And then on to new business, and then the agenda item is the emergency day e-learning plan. So needs that recommendation.
I hereby move that the Board of Education approve the e-learning program as presented and adopt the e-learning program for implementation district-wide in accordance with one oh five ILCS five slash ten dash twenty point five six. Second.
Moved in seconded, any additional comments?
Just, just to remind, like, uh, our speaker who, uh, spoke to us earlier, yeah, this is a case by case. And it certainly, uh, isn't a, a universal decision just out of the
Again, we appreciate the gentleman's comments earlier.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Very, um, thoughtful. Um, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then we have a strategic plan and transition planning budget.
Yeah, so I'm going to, Ryan, there's someone driving the slides here. Um, the board, you know, they chop me. But I want to talk a little bit about what's going on as of this, for this year. Um, as well as more of a, um, time spent on talking about, um, what's going to happen for the planning for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, so as you see the slide here, just as a reminder for the public, um, this was, uh, our strategic plan with the four goalers that were developed probably like five, six years ago now, um, with, with our new update, updated, um, focus areas in twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-two. Our approach is one of collaboration. Um, our goal is obviously to impact each of those six areas. I think it's fair to say we must be mindful that this year is not like a typical year. When we talk about strategic plan initiatives, when we talk about action plans that have to get done. Um, and that many things that, um, we had maybe targeted might be modified. Um, they might be, be, we certainly move forward to the, the next school year post-COVID. Um, or maybe years down the road. Um, but it doesn't take away our belief in, uh, systemic collaboration and the opportunities to communicate better. Um, I think what we learned, if anything, through all of this is that through our perseverance, through our grit, through some of our suffering, we're going to get better. But we're going to be, when we get on the other side of this, um, the COVID time, um, we're going to be a better district because of it. So from a student success standpoint, I want to, there you go. Um, when you look at the areas, you go to number six, I'm going to talk a lot about number six in a few slides from now. Um, we are, we do have a program evaluation timeline that Dr. Baughman has put together, uh, last year. One of the examples this year that we're working on that will come to the board later in the year is co-teaching or assessing our co-teaching model. That's an example of a program evaluation. Obviously, our expansion of offerings and experiences, whether that's, um, dual credit or that DP blended scheduling, summer opportunities. Some of it's going to be handled this year, some of it's going to be handled certainly through the transition planning as we think about the spring, the summer, and certainly next fall. Our PD, um, we've been talking a lot about PD. We've talked about PD and we've talked about number four, rigor and engagement. A lot of it's going hand in hand. Our teachers, many are learning things new this year that we never expected they would be learning yet. Um, some have been thrown into things that we weren't expecting. Um, so I think the professional growth is certainly on platforms, on technology, um, it's being tested across multiple modalities. Um, we're going to continue to expand those, uh, those opportunities throughout this year, but certainly as we move into the summer. And then the number five there, as the board remembers, we had a approved grant certification at the high school. We are currently in the infancy stages of the middle school. Um, once our middle and high school are both grant certified, this will certainly, uh, springboard the work we're doing for career pathways and look at a seven, twelve programing. Um, so that's going to be a point of emphasis under the student success for the remainder of this school year. From a community of learners standpoint, what you'll see in all of these areas is much of the work that we're doing now as we think about our current modalities and our instruction models, as well as, and probably more importantly, of where we're headed. All of these things that you see on these four slides or these four, or these four graphics are going to be connected to our transitioning into the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Getting our staff, continue to be involved in decisions that affect all of our jobs in our district. Looking at the choice inside of the PD, um, obviously looking at the continuation of blended online and flexible schedules and before and after school opportunities. Partnership with home and community, uh, one of the big areas, um, that I know Lu- Lupe and I are producing lip trap. Um, we have a committee, a group that's starting to look at our, having a hall of distinction, I know, um, Dr. Schumacher, you've been involved in that. And a recognition program, both from a athletic and music standpoint, but also just a, from a district standpoint. And that could include board members, administrators, teachers, uh, alum, uh, partners of the district, uh, you name it. So it's, that's something that we anticipate, um, moving into the summer and certainly the first recognition next fall. Uh, so a lot of work that's going into that. On the top there, you see the multi-year stateholder engagement. We'll be coming to the board later this year on a annual process that we're going to do to look at internal and external engagement and how we're getting feedback and when we're doing that with that feedback, when we're giving it, uh, how often, uh, what, what questions we're asking and then what we're doing with the data once it comes in. And then the last group is the operational excellence, probably more self-explanatory than, than some of the others. Uh, Ryan, his team will be coming back to the board with a four-year, uh, updated multi-year plan. Um, we're going to continue our work with DLR and look at our master facilities plan, as well as a capital projects plan. Uh, both for renovations, roofs, maintenance and repairs. Um, our emergency management is continuing with our active shooter drills. Um, obviously we're assessing our new security personnel and the effectiveness of those individuals in the impact in our district. As well as the review of our security measures, everything from cameras to entry waves to exits, um, visitor procedures. That's a point of emphasis. And then looking at multi-year financial forecasting. We'll be coming back to the board in January with a three to five year projection and plan. Let the board see, uh, how the, the strategic plan initiative is. And the work that we're going to do in the future will be impacting the overall budget, both from a, a short as well as a long-term position. both from a short as well as a long-term position. And then these are the areas that probably, they're certainly ongoing, but there're gonna be a point of, I guess, greater emphasis moving forward. It's something that's always in the, at the forefront of the work that we do. It's embedded in the work that we do, but it's gonna be areas that we're gonna bring greater structure to, conversation around, um, and certainly, um, future focus moving into the summer and in next year. Some of it, I just spoke out when you talk about the master facility plan and the financial health of the district. But the other areas, when, when you think about personnel and talent development, how do we recruit, retain, train, high-quality people? How do we get more minority candidates into District 115 to create a more diverse faculty and staff? How do we continue, continuously make this a place where employees wanna come, they wanna stay, and they wanna spend their career? They feel valued, there's a high level of culture, climate, and morale across the district. And then how do we get people to be in positions where they have voice in what they wanna do as professionals? They wanna grow individually, they wanna take their position to a next level. And how do we cultivate that, foster it, and be the catalyst for that to happen? Um, that's an area that is gonna be a, a high focus moving forward. Um, and obviously, the board knows we're in the process of, of replacing, uh, Mr. Courtney. Um, and that new job description is, is part of those responsibilities. So let me think about the future. When we get to the fall next year, when you look at those four targets, my goal is for each of those is to, when you think about the growth, that we're gonna be able to understand how we change as an organization, both as a collective group, but hopefully as individuals. We're gonna celebrate the things that we've done well and, and the tremendous amount of sex, success that we've achieved. We're gonna have to reestablish a great deal of connections with human beings. We just talked about that earlier tonight. It's gonna happen for kids, it's gonna happen for adults, and there's gonna be a transition that's gonna have to, have to occur in the support someplace to make that happen. And then we're gonna have to restore some of the culture. You think about all the staff that have been gone, think of all the kids that have been gone. That impacts our culture and climate. We have, we have staff members and kids who haven't seen their peers in months, some of them nine months. Um, that's gonna take some healing. It's gonna take some perseverance and some work to, to get that back. But it's an opportunity for us. And so, as we talk about, I use the word ignite and inspire, and inspire, 'cause I think those are two powerful things that we're gonna have to do as we think about next year. So this is the process we're gonna be, begin following. We're gonna, we're gonna, one creative process which we have. We're gonna be getting feedback, we're gonna develop new plans, we're gonna start the new year as we get to August next year, and then we're gonna support and evaluate. So my timeline on the next slide is from now until February, we're gonna place a tremendous amount of time getting stakeholder input and involvement, internally and externally. We're gonna review data and create models. What's working this year, then we wanna replicate next year or enhance next year. What is it about our instructional model that we wanna continue for the future post-COVID in District 115? Then when we get to March and May, those structures that we've agreed upon and said this is what we want for our school district next fall, we're gonna define those structures and those opportunities, and we're making sure they're solid. And that we know exactly where we're going, why we're doing it, and how we're gonna get there. Then June through August will be the golden implementation when you think about PD, access to resources, um, then beginning really the implementation. Some of that implementation, as you'll see, will start in the spring, some of it will even start the summer, and then certainly as we move forward into next fall. So we have put out a request, much like we did last May, for staff involvement. As of today, before the committee, committee meeting, we have sixty-five staff members who have expressed interest to serve in one of these five areas moving into next year, and planning for next year. And I'm gonna share a slide about each of these areas in a moment. But really, it's the stakeholder and the staff voice that's gonna help shape the future that we're headed to. This is not gonna be a doctorship or cabinet decision about what our future, when we open the doors in the fall looks like. It's gonna about parent input, certainly gonna about staff input, it's gonna about student input, if we can do that, um, then really, we're gonna get to a collective we, of, uh, a place of, of action for, for the fall. So from a student growth standpoint, the four areas, um, certainly looking at measures and outcomes based upon that we know there's gonna be identified learning gap from this year. We're gonna have to look at, at that by instructional model, by cohorts, by school, by district. And that's gonna be really important when you start looking at the staffing and personnel. 'Cause when you look at those four cohorts by school or, or, or across grade level span, that's really where we gotta talk about between our resources and where are the greatest needs of resources next year? And what model's gonna look like, what schedule's gonna be look like, but, um, and how flexible can be, can we, we be with those? Then it's gonna be looking at, based upon those measures and outcomes, what targets are we gonna set not only for next year, but for the two or three years beyond that? And then from a, a child support aspect, from a SEL as well as an academic, and what supports need to be in place to, to increase student growth and achievement? And then where are the learning gaps? From a PD standpoint, we know the curriculum is gonna need to be rewritten. There's gonna be different priorities going into next year based upon the conversation I just shared about the student growth and achievement. For our staff and our administrators, we'll be spending some time between now and the end of the year identifying those gaps and then looking at what do you need to prepare for, uh, in the fall. The summer PD options for our staff based upon either instructional model needs, based upon, um, uh, fall needs for curriculum, um, and assessment writing, uh, based upon platform, when you talk about LMS, or the technology needs moving into next year. Um, it's gonna be summer, uh, of learning, um, as well as preparing for the fall learning that's gonna go on. And then the last two is just whatever those things are excited from December to February for the new models that will be in place or the, the same models but with enhanced options. Um, we know there's gonna be platforms that have to support it. Um, everything we talked about with Canvas this year, you know, do we stick with Google Classroom four through six? Or do we move to Canvas for, for those grade levels? Um, what does seesaw, the, the future seesaw look like? So all those decisions that we make between now and May, um, certainly we have to support it through PD all through the summer and into the fall of next year. The personnel and staffing group is really gonna have a voice in where our resources go for next year. Um, what does SEL look like? What is counselors, social workers, psychologists? What are the, the needs of those as we transition from a year of a lot of isolation to a new sense of affirmation through the, the new school year? So what targeted support? Where do reading specialists do next year? Do we need more interventionist in math and ELA next year based upon the losses that we, we may have experienced for this year? And then what supports need to, need to happen from the emotional side of things? And then last, or second to last is the, the scheduling piece. And I took a holistic look at scheduling. Later tonight, we're gonna improve the calendar, but I think that's on the very basic level of the calendar. I think there's so much more that this committee, this group of people have to look at. We look at, what does the daily schedule look like for our elementary, middle, and high school kids? You know, we, we've seen, you know, the, the emphasis on outdoor play and outdoor, you know, the, the recess aspect this year of getting kids outside in the fresh air. Do we look at, revisit that again in our schedule? Do we need more ELA and, and, and the mathematics next year? Um, obviously, where is the fine art split? I mean, all of that needs to be addressed and looked into moving forward. What is the staffing workday look like? Continue to provide a hybrid option, we continue to provide a flexibility for our staff to be on campus and at home. Um, certainly as a board, as a superintendent, we talked about that. We've been open to really, the sky's the limit as far as schedule, uh, both for kids but also for our adults. So it's looking at both that staff workday, the student workday, um, whether that's remote, hybrid, or full in person as we historically have done it. And then just from an instruct, instructional minute standpoint. To me, this is one of those committees that's gonna drive a lot of everything else that we're gonna do. Uh, once we look at what a day in the life of a kid and what a day in the life of a, a faculty member looks like for our, for our professionals.
Dr. Schumacher, there'll be some crossover between Evolution 115 and this Team 112
Absolutely.
because they're so deeply connected.
Yes, we're gonna have to talk about how does the vision that we're setting in, integrate with the way our building's looking in the future. Absolutely. And then the fall is, in the, the summer and fall opportunity group, you know, it's, as you can see, there is, is a little bit of everything. Um, everything from the, the possibility of a year-round schooling option for families, and that could be by grade level, it could be by, by building. But, you know, do we have, do we have a fourth graders in certain schools with enough of them that would wanna be a full-around s- school? Um, student, where they start this summer, um, and they, they, they basically follow the, the year-round schedule? There's no reason that in September and October, they could not be in school with their traditional nine-month peers. Um, but, again, I think we just have to look differently and be very open-minded to say, how do we meet the needs of all of our staff, how do we meet the needs of all of our learners with the variety of options that we can? Um, without certainly, um, losing any of the expectations that we have continuously to get better and to, um, meet kids where they are and achieve a higher level. Um, but we know there's gonna be tutoring needs, we know there's gonna be summer bridge programs. Um, it's, it, really, this group is gonna be looking at what are all the opportunities that we can provide kids both from a summer experience but also as we come back in the fall? And how does that impact the budget, how's that impact personnel? So as you can see, all these committees are gonna overlap each other. They're all gonna have to talk to each other, much like happened from May until August with our, our opening of the school year this year. So really, that's, here's the next steps. Um, the feedback component, the review of data, um, the team planning, communication, and then preparation. Uh, it's gonna be a lot of heavy lifting. Um, it's exciting work. It's, it's, it's something that if, if you're looking for a silver lining in COVID land, and the work, the work that we've done this year and what we've gone through, this is it. Um, it's an opportunity for us to be able to have voice, to define our future, to take control of what we want, what, what do we want our organization to look like when we enter the school year next year? And we cannot wait. We just, if, if we treat this as any other year where we're gonna start year, next year like we've always started it, I think we're, we're negligent and, and we, we haven't taken the heart, we reflect upon what we've gone through and where we wanna go moving forward. And I'm really proud of the, the staff, you know, we have sixty-five of them really since Friday, who have signed on to say, "I'm interested in participating." It's fantastic. That means they want their voice heard, they wanna be part of the solution, they wanna be part of our vision moving forward. And, and, and certainly, that, that's, that's encouraging.
Should be applied.
So, once this week is over, we will have the names of the individuals that wanna participate. Uh, we will spend at the district level, some of our break time, um, putting these groups together and communicating back out. And really, when we come back in January, we're gonna hit the ground running. And then we will do monthly updates to the board, uh, as far as the progress of each of these committees.
So I have a question. So I have a question, Dr. Schumacher.
Yeah.
So you'll, you'll have these committees, yeah, and these people will be interactively working, but there's an awful lot of, of technical data and mining and, um, you know, darning the information and putting it in a fashion that's going to be digestible and, and able to be acted upon. It, as a board, I would like to see us take the position that uh, we want to make sure you have the resources, uh, not just the money, but also the people uh, that would help in, uh, in, in managing, because this is a big, ambitious, bold project.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I agree a hundred percent that in this time of disruption, it gives us that silver lining and opportunity. But to really make it work, I, I, you know, when we run lean on administration, teachers still have to teach. Uh, you, you know, there's gonna have to be another group of people.
Or person, or project manager, yes.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have some kind of management people that are going to, to take some of this information and put it together. So, you know, I, I would like to, to see you and your staff kinda think about what type of personnel would be useful for, for, uh, accumulate the data and be able to implement your plan. Because I think that would be the difficult, because there's so many pieces here. It's not like you can just focus on one thing, you really have to integrate it all. So, you know, whatever you, you, uh, would, you know, we'd like to see what you would look at is trying to, to put that type of, uh, group together.
There's a lot of details that have to be moved forward.
Right.
And if you dive into the details, you miss the, you miss the holistic picture in the process.
Yeah, so you, so your teacher.
And someone that has those, again, back to your point, savvy analytic skills, archiving skills, no systems. You know, we, we would need some sort of
Exactly.
project manager software to move this, archive this, store it, move it forward. We need sophistication.
Yeah, because it's, the teachers are there for their ideas and their, and their observations. But, but those people that are gonna put that data together, it's gonna move so much faster if you have those other people available.
Or a person.
Right, well, maybe one person, or maybe a person, and then a group of people underneath them. But a, as a board, I would like to see us, eh, you know, encourage you to, to take a look at that, you know, and, and then discuss it further 'cause it's gonna come up fast, and if you really wanna move on it, you know, you're gonna start looking for people.
Yeah, we, and I appreciate that feedback, and we've also, I've talked to a few of the cabinet members about, you know, in the, in the business world, at times, you know, you have a group of people who are, have the ability to be dedicated just to that project uh, at times, where, you know, whether that's, however long that is, a week, three weeks, a month. Yeah, you know, we're, we're, we're tired of having those conversations, you know, is there, is there a way at, at times to give some of these committee members, you know, if they have a week of, a week of time to work on a, a certain area or focus on their specific area? You know, that would be, you know, a goal for, for the, to move things forward and to really to dig in the weeds of things versus trying to do a two-hour meeting here at their school one day after a teacher's worked all days, and they, they go home and they grade and I mean, it's, in order to do sub-plans, prepare for that day, they're gonna be missing half the day. So, we're trying to figure out logistic-wise, is there a way that we can give some of our committee members here longer blocks of time as well? Or longer days of time to, to get in the weeds and to get a lot of work done in a, for shorter period of time where they're not just beastin' with it two hours here, three hours here? 'Cause it's hard.
You're gonna probably have to do both, right?
Yeah.
Because you, you have limited ability to, to decrease their present workload. So, eh, whatever you come up with, you know, let, let's, let's take a hard look at that soon, so as a board, we can, you know, uh, uh, assign the resources, and you can start, you know, trying to acquire those personnel. I mean, they're out there. You know, so the, the models there, I mean, you need, I mean, it's that project manager model, which, you know, you're not gonna hire them for a life necessarily, but at least for this project, right? So, so then your, your teachers, yes, they come up with their ideas, can pass on, here's the, you know, do the work, put the archiving together, get the data analytics, and, and we can keep thinking about, okay, how's this integrate with the next group? You know, we don't have to sit down and try to do the spreadsheet and everything else that goes with it. So, uh, and, eh, eh, you know, I'm, you know, there's no question, I think you're on the, the right track, and we have an opportunity here, but I just wanna make sure that we give you every opportunity to grab it.
Yeah, and then certainly, understanding that our, our, you know, come January, it's not gonna get easier for our teachers.
Right.
And, and, you know, the workload is not gonna all of a sudden go away. I mean, we're, 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 so it's, it's to minimize, you know, certainly the value of their input, their voice, their ideas, to put a plan together but not having them always spend the time doing some of the detail of putting it together or dissecting the data. Or, you know, we should be able to hand over data to them and, and ask for their feedback and interpretation of this now, what does this mean?
Right.
And then create structures from that, and then come back to them on, with examples and, and ideas and models. That's good feedback.
Yeah, and, you know, I think we all know this. Even in this most unprecedented year, I don't think we veered much from our plan. I think we, 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 we had to get to a point faster than we wanted to get to a point, or we had to, people had to move faster than they needed to move. But if you look at where we're at, we were still very thoughtful. A lot of the decisions were made still very much aligned with this strategic plan that we, we adopted. And I shared, I shared with Dr. Schimpf an article that came out of EduKlaus, which is the number-one education technology think tank in the world. And Dr. Schimpf, he so eloquently kind of summed it up. There are gonna be institutions that survive. There's gonna be institutions that evolve. And then there's gonna be institutions that take this opportunity to truly transform. And I think we're on that third piece. And, but we're gonna do it together. We're gonna do it collectively. We're gonna do it thoughtfully as we continue to, kind of continue to evolve of who we are over, you know, over the next, you know, to be, to position this next strategic plan.
Absolutely.
Okay, really, really wonderful update.
Yes, thank you.
Good stuff.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schump. Very good.
You know, Dr. Schimpf, too, I think while I'm very thankful for the public that took the time to come to these meetings, I'm wondering if there's some sort of short video that we could... I, I think this is a good message to share with the rest of the community. So I'm wondering if there's some way you can, you know, maybe get this message out as a kind of a, because I think the community would like to hear some of these things as well.
Oh, I agree.
I mean, obviously in a simplified, so shorter version, but I, I, I think this is a very good message to get out. Okay. All, then anything else? All right, and then we're moving on to all business. And then we have the approval of the final 2020 tax levy.
Okay, so I will share my screen. Okay. All right, for tonight's meeting, the district will be proposing to the board the final estimated tax levy for 2020. Each year, Illinois School Code allows the district to levy local tax dollars through the collection of property taxes. And it's this collection of property taxes that makes up the largest source of revenue for the district, which is the case in most schools in Illinois. For District 115, the tax levy provides about seventy-two percent of the total budgeted revenue for this school year. Now, these funds are typically collected in June and September of each year and are usually split fifty-fifty. So knowing when these large revenue streams are coming in also provides the district with great cash flow flexibility. In addition to local revenue, the district anticipates that the state will provide twenty-two percent of the total annual revenue. However, to Mindy's point that she mentioned earlier, as the governor has said after the failure of the fair tax legislation, there are several large budget cuts that will need to be made, and education will not be exempt from that, making the evidence-based funding model a less reliable source of revenue going forward. Now, to that point, we have already seen that's starting to happen as we did not get our additional tier funding from EBF this year, which amounted to about $300,000. The tax levy also allows the district to fund many of its biggest expenses, including safely bringing students back onsite during a pandemic and having the resources necessary to offer families three different learning models, thus making the tax levy even more important this year. So in order for the district to come up with the amount to levy from property taxes, there are a few variables that the district has to estimate for this calculation. And the first of those variables would be, of course, the equalized assessed value, or EAV for short, of all residential and commercial property within the district. Now, the township assessor doesn't use the total value of each property, but uses a third of whatever the fair cash value is. And so to get a good estimate of what the total EAV will be for this year, the district reached out to both Kendall and Kane Counties, and they anticipate a 5.53% increase over last year, or, or an estimate of about $980 million in EAV for 2020. And this is in line with the historical trend that we've been seeing over the past five years after property values dipped after the Great Recession around 2013, 2014. In addition to the total value of all current property in the district, it's also important to estimate all of the new property that was built this year. Similar to EAV, there has been growth over the past five years in total new property. Again, using estimates from both Kendall and Kane Counties, the district anticipates that the total value of all new property to be around 18.6 million this year, which slight, which is slightly down from the 20.6 million in 2019. And this specific variable is, it's very important because it's gonna impact the amount of available funds that we can potentially get and potentially increase the student enrollment, which then leads to bigger future expenses. And lastly, the tax levy calculation uses two other important variables that are already known. And the first is the Consumer Price Index from 2019, which is 2.3%. And similar to both new property and EAV, CPI for the first half of the decade was trending downward, but has since bounced back over the past five years. Another variable is the amount of bond and interest payments that the district anticipates to make this school year, which is automatically levied by both Kendall and Kane County in order to ensure that the district has the funds to make those payments on time. Now, once we have all of these variables determined, the district then uses a calculation worksheet to determine the amount to levy from local property taxes. And again, using the variables that we just talked about, the district anticipates approximately 2.3 million in new revenue. Now, in order for the district to ensure that all available tax dollars are captured through this process, the district plans to levy 4.99% over the prior year, which, under the truth in taxation law, it doesn't require the district to hold a public hearing. And the reason why we do this is to make sure that in the event that the estimate for new property is way off and the value actually comes in at, let's say, 25 million instead of our estimate of 18.6 million, the district will still have the capacity to capture all of those available funds. So now that we know how much the district's tax levy is going to be, it's important to know how this impacts the district's overall financial health. According to board policy, the district is required to have year-end fund balances that are at minimum twenty to thirty percent of the total annual revenues in each operating fund. And as you can see, the district meets that requirement. And so to kind of conclude the presentation, given the board's fiscally responsible decision-making over the past few years, the district now has the resources available to provide students with a safe learning environment during a pandemic and to be the only school, as far as I know, to offer three different learning models to begin the school year and continue to do so despite everything that's going on. So this is something that the board and the district should be proud of. Any questions or comments?
Thanks, Mike, for finalizing that. We appreciate it. I think we understand why the levy's what it is. And it's a very clear, concise presentation. Thank you. Very well done.
And just, you know, we, we know that, we, we know all this, but EAV going up also then work tax cap district. It's more of an equalizer. And as we see growth, it's something we're just gonna have to manage. Because then growth never pays for itself, and then we find ourselves in that situation that we were in in the early 2000s. So we're not there yet. But, you know, we're definitely trending in that way.
I made a motion to approve the resolution. Want the rising plan aggregate tax burden for the tax year 2020? This is for them. Second.
Yeah, moves in second. Any additional comments? Let's do a roll call, please.
Mr. Capplet?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher-Marker?
Yes.
Ms. Sheel?
Yes.
And Dr. Burke?
Yes. And then we've got the school calendar that we reviewed at committee. Any other motion, please?
Motion to approve the District 115, 2021, 2022 school calendars. Second.
Moves in second. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then last, we have some policies on this.
Motion to place the attached District 115 board education policy on display as presented.
Second.
Moves in second. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. And our last, we have Superintendent Board.
Yeah, well, when I, when we finish here, we're gonna play a little bit of a video from today's Open the Time Capsule at YHS from 2000, twenty years ago. So we'll show a little video of that. But prior to that, I just want to acknowledge a few things. And one, Mike Martin's speaking up there. He just did finish his master's in education. So that's a fitting summary. I stopped. Way to go, Mike, much smarter. We've got a lot of good things going on in the schools, especially with, with authors lately, in music departments. And we had Henry Winkler, the pond, who visited our, we're gonna, yeah, Anderson Post, I know some of our board members, won that.
Yeah.
Pretty neat, pretty neat story. You better really break out.
Good day.
What's that?
It was a really good day. Really great of that.
He's a very good speaker.
Very much so. Now, I, I personally want to thank Mr. Keer and the team for setting that up for range. And that was really great. Thank you.
Great message for the kids.
It was.
Central Center is also doing, or they had this, this last Friday, they had a virtual author visit, an unpublished story, and learned how to draw. They also had a family reading night a few weeks back, and forty-five kids joined. And this Thursday at six, they're gonna have another one. So they're hoping for another great turnout. Grand Reserve is hosting its first holiday concert drive-in. So if you want a date night with that special someone, it'll be tomorrow at 5:30, 6:30, and 7:30. But, you know, great help by Ryan and your team. Heather and her team with the Building and Grounds Group. Mr. McHugh, the PTO, Grand Reserve. So it's, we're hoping for a good turnout and kind of a neat event. They also did a K-1 sing-along last week. They got to get on there with the music teachers and the kids and their families at Grand Reserve. So they had about twenty minutes or so and sent my family to listen to the great sing-along at Grand Reserve. The high school is working on their virtual Prism concert. And I believe that's gonna go live Friday night at seven. Victor Anderson showed me a clip of it, and it's really, really cool. I, I promise I'll make sure that all the board members get a link to it. But I tell you what, you can't stop them. COVID's not gonna get in the way of them having Prism. But it's, they're, they're making, they're making it work. And I think there is some discussion about a magical drive-through. I haven't seen the details of that yet, but, so they're moving forward as well. So a lot, a lot of good things going on. And now we're gonna show the video for today, the Open the Time Capsule.
Hello, my name is Sophia Jaziniak, media specialist of the Student Council. I would like to welcome everyone here joining us for this event that was twenty-plus years in the making. In 1996, the Yorkville community approved a referendum that led to the building of a new high school that opened in the spring of 1998. A time capsule was placed in the wall to be opened in the year 2020. Today, we are here to open it.
Hello, my name is Sabine Garcia, Vice President of the Student Council. Thank you for everyone in attendance. Please let me introduce the following individuals. Director of Communications, Mrs. Christine Liptrot. Principal, Mr. David Travis. Superintendent, Dr. Timothy Schimpf. Associate Principal, Mrs. Megan Martinez. Associate Principal, Mr. Joel Wyeth. Student Council sponsors, Mrs. Sue Mesmer and William Fry. Special guest, former principal, Mr. Frank Babbage. Special guest, former building and grounds director, Brian Devoe. School Board President, Lynn Burks. And thank you to the members of the press for covering this event.
Hello, my name is Madison Sheel, and I am the Note Secretary of Student Council.
Hello, my name is Ariel Caffey, and I'm the Attendance Secretary of Student Council.
Here's some news and interesting facts from the world of 2000. A cost of a gallon of gas was $1.26. Sony released the PlayStation 2 gaming console in Japan. And this year, in 2020, we're releasing the PlayStation 5. In December of 2000, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled to end the vote recount in Florida in the Bush v. Gore case, giving the presidency to George W. Bush after a prolonged legal battle following the election.
Tiger Woods became the youngest player to win a grand slam in golf. The final New Peanuts comic strip was published. For the first time, certain cell phones were able to access the internet.
Hello, my name is Alexia Harried, President of Student Council. We will now open the time capsule and see what's inside. So this is a homecoming brochure. And then this is also one of the newspapers from that time period, The Fox Tales. There's two of them.
What was the headline?
The headlines, Falcony, Falcony and Sat, Student and Body Get Ready for Big Move. And the more things change, the more they remain the same.
Here I have the Yorkville High School 1999 to 2000 Curriculum Guide.
Red paper was rare.
And here I have a picture of the 1998 competition Palm Squad. Says, "Super Sectionals Class A Dance Champions" and "Super Sectionals Class A Palm Dance Participants."
All right, first we have a first-place ribbon from the sectional contest for the Palms team. And then there's a picture of the Varsity Cheer Team from 1997. And on the back, it says, "This year, the cheerleaders were put to the test. It gets difficult to cheer for a team that has lost many of their games, but we are faithful fans." And they have a cheer that says, "We love 'em, Foxes, team, we love 'em." It says, "This was the last football season that the students get to go to the game at their school. After this, off across the street to the junior high for the big games. But that's okay, here we are, the 1997 Varsity Football Cheerleaders. Boy, did we have fun."
That's right, that was the middle school at the time, the press streets. When St. Gatwick was in the middle school.
So first I have Yorkville High School Dedication and Open House that was held September 13, 1998. This is the cake that they made for it. And then this is a little napkin. And then just the program.
And then, just the program. Then next, I have, these are the Student Council members, and the time capsule was opened May 19, 2000, or put in. And then, it's Matt Huber, Whitney Trumbull, Christine White, Maggie Malley, Adam Neny, Janice, Janice Burgern, Jenny Benson, and Katie DeFelice.
First, I have the Yorkville High School Concert Band. So, they have the list of all the names of who is on the band, and then, a picture of our band room. The director at the time was Dr. Steve Moline, or Mr. Steve Moline. And then, all of the band members signed at the back of the page. And then, next, I have a Valentine from the 1999 Valentine NHS sales. So, I'm glad to say that I feel like we've improved what we sell. And then, the 1997 to 98 National Honor Society Officers and Members. This concludes the time capsule opening ceremony. Another time capsule will be placed in the wall to be opened in the year 2050. Please consider submitting an idea of what should be placed in this time capsule to a Student Council officer or sponsor. Thank you, and have a wonderful day.
The music makes you miss the normal music, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, great job by the kids, and Mr. Wyatt, and the high school, Ms. Jean, the Student Council. I think we're going to talk about trying to, for the next one, for the next 30 years, as they do this at the end of the year, we're going to make a little bit of bigger space for the wall. See if we can draw some more center blocks, and maybe add some additional things.
Chromebook.
Oh, that was good.
Where's this chromebook?
Where is this?
So, thanks for everybody, and kind of nice nostalgia, and certainly, come a long ways since 2030, 2000. And you guys, certainly, many of you have been in the community and been involved for all those years, so, kudos to you.
Yeah, they're moving.
Right? Yeah, they actually, from the story I heard, it was in April, they actually, kids were actually tearing stuff around the street, like, mid-year.
Oh, yeah.
Pretty neat.
Move here.
Ryan, the bolt. I just said, the Grand Reserve Drive-Thru is Wednesday night, I missed boat. Not tomorrow, Wednesday. So, if you go to date night at the Grand Reserve tomorrow, it's going to be very quiet, might be police coming by.
Careful what you're doing.
Right, Wednesday night. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We do have an executive session, so we need that read in, please. We don't, there's no decision after the executive session, so. There will be an action.
All right, I'll read it. Motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment compensation, discipline performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel of the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity, by ILCS 120/2C1. In the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including the meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired, by ILCS 120/2C5.
I need a second?
Second.
Moves in second, and roll call, please?
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke?
Yes. All right, everybody, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Yeah, Bob, I...
We already did that.
Yes.
No, we have to in public.
We have to here?
Yeah. I'm remitted.
All right, I move to open the meeting, second. Well, you have to do a roll call.
Roll call. Who made the motion?
Me.
Brad.
Yes.
Yes, Sean. Roll call, Brad?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Jason?
Here.
Okay, so, we have nothing coming out of this meeting, so now, I move, we close the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Good meeting. Adjourned.
Happy Holidays.
Happy Holidays.
That's a double motion.
The Festivus for the rest of the...